... and those other teachers in the building who have gone with us and we have enough chaperones to take students, that's really helpful. So, moving forward, after your approval, we'll send out letters this week to parents. We also do a really good job of contacting all of the parents who have said no, to make sure that there is a reason behind that. Yeah, we want to make sure that kids are supported, whether they're scared to go, they know that there's enough support there for them, or if there are financial needs, that we find that out and support those families too. We write that place a grant each year to make sure that there are funds for any families who cannot afford it. We base it mostly on free and reduced funds, but I also reach out to those families that say they have some financial needs that are not following the free and reduced funds, because you never know when a home environment can change dramatically, especially again with the pandemic. So, we do a good job of reaching out to all the families that say no, find out why, see if we can, if we can help find a supportive child or support a family. It's exciting, the place is new, they're renovating it, so it's a dorms and facilities. So, going back up to the South Main area, if you have all of the lessons and pathology work that students have done traditionally for years in schools, it's a great way to pass it, and something that we feel is looking forward to. I'm very surprised at the results of the survey, knowing that that would be people already began their footsteps to these activities that they're on.
So, compared to the historic Bay Beach, are there locations different a few miles inland, is that right? Are they the same curriculum, or is it different than it used to be?
Same curriculum. Just similar facilities.
Similar facilities.
Yeah. I'll walk it down a little bit, as I was at home before.
Is this the first time back in three years because they were renovating, or you moved to Holland Springs for two?
Right. One year they were renovating, we were at Holland Springs.
Right.
And then the next year, COVID.
My daughter. Phenomenal, phenomenal. The whole independence thing at that age is great.
Yeah, that's part of the lesson, isn't it? That two nights away from your family.
Exactly.
You're trying to find a way to let families from, because in most situations.
Yeah, fantastic.
Different than other experiences.
Kathy?
Thank you.
I know that traditionally, there have been, you know, there are always a few kids who don't go for one reason or another, and we, we try to provide similar activities here. We're still going to be doing that.
Yeah, for those kids who do not go for one reason or another, we have alternative perks here for them that may be most dangerous, and some of our six grade staff members perform on them, and they try and mirror the experience that they're having up there over the day, so they'll put a great speech into things. So, I think they contacted the trustees last year and some work with them, similar experiences are close to it, hopefully they'll be okay.
Great, thanks.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is Jen Reed going to?
Jen Reed is going.
Getting her break as well.
I don't know if that's a break.
A break. It changes scenery.
What are you going to do without her here for a week? What are you going to do without her here for a week?
That, I don't know, Dr. Reed writes for us.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Great.
Great.
Easy. Thank you.
Have fun.
Maybe back later to do another break trip, which is, you know, we're not running the Washington PBC trip, which is just logistics of planning that in the middle of COVID and not knowing what we could do is the under way to go. But, we are looking at, we're looking for our eighth graders, it's culminating activities, getting them the next week for them activities, and we do have a thought of trying to get an opening for them, so if they have that experience, they can keep it going, and that being great, they didn't get to go to Terry Beach or College School either, so they remember that location in school. So, hopefully, we'll get them launched and back to, unless you do that for them.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
They tried dating early.
Ain't no problem. Thank you.
Remember the presentation from the trustees on the Welcome Center?
Yeah.
Was there a timeline on that?
Yeah, I don't think they've started construction yet.
No, they're, I don't, they're one of their major funder, how, how I see it.
It's going to happen for the next, like, ten years.
That's going to be.
Because I remember thinking, I was like, oh, that'd be a cool plan, you know, and then I was like, oh, ten years.
My understanding originally was that they had their major funder.
Right.
And that it was going to happen this past winter.
They haven't announced yet, though.
But, last time I was there, nothing's happened.
But, they haven't announced their funding.
They're doing a big Welcome Education Center at Crane.
Right, I think Tracy Reddick went down and poured it, so I'd like to see some of the start, so I haven't, I only opened it, but I think it's.
So, they are doing it. I knew that the plan was to do it this summer, I mean, do it in time for the summer.
One of the members of the STEAM team is involved in that, and I'll ask her when we meet next. What's the status?
It was in place of the SNAK.
Oh, yeah.
Structure, and that's still all theirs.
Yeah, they're not going yet.
Yeah.
I'll get you that, babe.
I thought that was so cool.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Okay, so, it's 7:17. Why don't we open the public hearing for the proposed FY23 budget?
Don't move. Right?
Do we need to move that?
Second.
All in favor? I'm flying blind.
This is a first timer.
So, we have no citizens here wanting to be heard on the budget.
Are we moving the budget, moving the budget numbers, correct?
Correct.
And the budget number, it was $34,930,486. Are we subtracting $95,000 out of that and moving $34,000, it'd be $34,486?
So, we removed the, Brian and Cheryl removed the assistant principal from the budget.
So, update me, because I didn't hear anything about this, so I need, and Brian's not here, so can you give me an update on what's happened with the assistant principal? Because I thought that was a valuable and important position, and I know there was some concern, but I don't think we had any further discussion beyond that.
Brian called me last Friday after our meeting and said that the decision was made based on the feedback he received at our meeting Thursday night to remove that position from the budget. And that's where it stands at this point.
So, that was not in the budget anyway? That was actually?
There was an ESER fund.
ESER fund, correct. So, it wouldn't really affect the budget number at all?
No.
Okay.
So, those ESER funds are, they're placeholder, could be used at a future date?
Correct. I mean, we have to allocate them when we submitted our plan.
We have time.
But, you, it's meant, you have amendments, you do amendments, and as we go on, we adjust the allocation based off the needs. So, the funding's there for any other purpose.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Are we, so, one of the things, and this is a question for anybody, that I noticed at least on the tour, was when there seemed to be busting at seams, like, there was, there's like a teeny corner of a teacher's room, and then there's two temporary classrooms for ELL kids, and then the VCBAs, but they're not, they're like three-quarter walls and stuff going, like, it's just, seems like a very precarious situation. Not to mention some other pullouts are happening in the cafeteria. Is there any way to use any of those ESER funds for, to build out like those trailer, the white that Special Ed has now, to add some space there? Because it does seem like, you know, it's very COVID, COVID-related, the additional services that are needing to happen, and getting that additional space and additional support in the classrooms, and, you know, so I didn't know if that was, I don't know how much these things cost, I don't know, but I just was curious if that's something that ESER funds would ever be used to do, is that permissible, or?
It is permissible. So, it is allowable. I think at one point, when Brian and I met with Amy, she was talking about space.
Yeah.
And there was the mention of a possibly, like, some kind of trailer, it's probably similar to the module. I think those run about $100,000.
Yeah, about $100,000. And the problem is with the rental, once you have it, it's almost impossible to get rid of it. To get rid of it costs as much as it does to put it up, so it's not as easy as moving it in and moving it out for next year. You really get sucked into it. We, we've owned those things for years. We also got written up for using it for special education in the past. So, it's not a suitable site for special education delivery of services.
Yeah, you can throw something else out.
Yeah, and it sounds like it's almost a wash in the money.
Yeah, I think it's worth having a bigger discussion with Brian.
Of space utilization, remember, Doian's 75 kids less.
Right.
Right now.
Right, I'm just.
And so, could you shift?
Yeah, I mean, what I was wondering, and I had mentioned the last one, is why couldn't we, I mean, we arbitrarily moved preschool to Winthrop last year, why don't we just arbitrarily move it to Doian?
I understand.
For next year, and that will, because they have space, I mean, it could go back to Winthrop, but just because there's space there.
One thing I was sort of, again, just thinking about space-wise is, so they're integrated preschools, and then I believe the students stay in whatever school they started in, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
That was the historic.
I'm not talking about historic, I'm talking about what's going on now. And so, if we are locating the preschool in one school, that may impact kids with high needs, special education services, which does mean a different student teacher ratio, it does mean a different number of staff, it does mean a different space. So, I just didn't know if that was part of the, when we're sort of talking about preschools back and forth, again, I don't, I know that piece of it is operational and not really, but I'm just wondering, is that part of the space issue and the budget issue, like, that piece of the conversation? Because I know, I mean, we talked about staffing so much, and the budget is so staffing, sort of.
I mean, I would think that, and I don't know what the truth is, but if all this, all the kids who are special needs, who are in those, those programs, all stay in one building, is that inequitable? That one school would have all the kids who have preschool requirements, the other school did not?
No, so once you're giving proper services, I'm just saying, like, I know other towns in the area will have schools that sort of specialize in the delivery of different services, but I'm just wondering if it's part of the conversation in preschool, how, if you keep it at Winthrop, is that impacting, are we following through with, okay, that's maybe a higher population of kids who need additional services, in which case this one school is going to need a different type of staffing, a different type of student teacher ratio, a different type of classroom setup? I don't know, it just was something I was thinking about as I was walking around.
Those are good questions for Brian, I think, maybe we could get that on the agenda for our next meeting when he's here, and Kate and I can prep him at our agenda meeting and make sure that he's prepared for that.
Yeah, I would say that, having been through modulars a couple of times, both at the middle school and at the, at the Winthrop school, they're a bit of a trap.
Very time.
Yeah, they're expensive, they provide a second-class way to deliver services to other kids, and even though they seem like an appealing stopgap solution, they're not as stopgap as you think, they're much, they become much more permanent than you'd like very quickly. It's probably almost always better to move services between buildings or deliver them in less than ideal circumstances within the building if you can.
Yeah, but that's a potential, awesome, so that's something.
So, so is a modular.
Not for using a traditional classroom, or, you know what I'm saying, like, it's just, I'm sure all these things are being thought about, it's just, when I was looking at sort of the, the people bursting at the seams there.
And the more elegant solution, which is build a new school.
Well, I know, but that's still, it's going to take a while, so.
Can we do a community build, Chubb, and put an addition on, do you think, rally the troops from the playground?
No, buildings are supported, a lot more kids are there right now, I know the services are different.
500 kids.
The class sizes, as we saw them, did not look that big.
Just more.
Huh, I don't know.
So, yeah, so just, both the buildings were almost 500 kids each.
Yep.
Starts, so, they've been much bigger.
Winthrop's getting close.
So, that's the biggest disparity I do see, is, you know, with all the budget, you get some CD requirements, and the biggest disparity I see is the population numbers of the two schools.
Right.
Seems to be a problem, that if Brian was here, I'd say, well, that looks like a problem that needs to be solved, what are your recommendations?
Yep, and we'll, yeah, so we'll talk about that next time he's here, for sure.
So, that means the number, that $95,000 is outside of the $34,930, so that's the number we're advancing, correct?
Okay. So, anyone that came in, we're actually in the middle of the budget hearing, did anyone come to ask questions or comment about the budget? No? Okay.
You can't.
You can, feel free. Okay.
So, other than the middle, the elementary school assistant principal position, were there any other ones that Brian had recommended based on feedback to change, or?
That was the only one that I know, were there any other adjustments, Harold, that you and Brian made after the fact, or?
No.
No, okay. So, what we were presented last week is, minus the assistant principal, is what it is. That number's the same.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing that stood out to me was that, what we all focused on it last week, was the supports needed for the changes in student population at the Winthrop school, between the ELL and other teachers, it's really flexed that school both in terms of support educators and direct educators. To the extent there can be some sort of decision-making process that redistributes students, it might be, it might be a whole system. I, I know they're considering it. I also think that this whole idea that we'll get 50 more next year is probably not true.
Hmm, yeah.
Because I don't see why you get 50 one year, 50 again, and not a year, a year and a month, so I have never seen that in the past. And I still have a reasonable explanation as to why we gained 50 or 70 students this year in one building and not in the other.
I was wondering that too, it seems.
No one's given us a rationale.
Why we did, or why we will?
Why we did, and why we will, both. So, we did get them, right? We never had before, 20 years I've been here, and then we are told to expect another figure. I don't, I don't know the rationale behind that, we were just told that.
Well, I, this, this next study will be somewhat valuable.
Yeah, or, I just don't know what their assumptions are with that factor too.
Well, I stole a line from Hugh this week, you know, that dollars are fungible, you know, and, and I do think, because I also, I'm not sure that those younger grade levels are going to pan out the way that they're projected, and I think that we should look, because there are some other needs as far as specialists and kind of, you know, secondary supports for teachers, that if those numbers don't pan out, and we do have additional room in there, seeing a shift there, so we can see some of those higher-level, more skilled, professional, you know, teacher supports in there.
Yeah, and I, and I think obviously the idea of remediation within the ESER funds for current learning deficits is probably the ideal use of those, so, you know, that, that's important.
I meant the new ELL teacher, she was awesome.
Good, that's huge.
Yeah, she was awesome. How do the ELL populations compare between the two elementary, in terms of numbers?
It's far higher at Winthrop, right? We had that influx of, of ELL kids midway through the year, last year. But, I don't know what the exact numbers are.
I have a question, I have all these questions tonight, and Brian's not here. So, although a lot of the population, I know that I take care of, speak Spanish, the Brazilian population speaks Portuguese, does it matter? ELL is ELL, does it matter what language they're fluent in? I mean, the teachers, can they do more than one language?
They're using Google Translate at Winthrop right now, and the teachers, I was actually sitting with a boy in a fourth grade class, and the cutest thing in the world, he had like a big smile, he was working on spelling, and, I don't know, it was awesome to watch, but, um, yeah, he's like, tap the phone, and then he'll talk, and it'll translate, and, I mean, it's definitely not ideal, but, he was also fairly impressed with his English, and I believe he started the year completely.
Wow.
Without English language, so, but I, I know that that's supporting them, but I think it's also, like, I think it's kind of breaking some of the teachers' hearts too, that they're like, we can't do more, and we just need more, like, these kids are super excited to learn, and it just, you know, even the additional staffing is like not enough, so.
I would just add, from my personal experience, and some of you may already know this, but when I was 10, my parents put me in public school in Croatia, and I had forgotten the language, I had learned it when I was like four, but I hadn't spoken it seven years. I was fluent in a month, and nobody helped me, but, you know, I mean, it came, I'm sure some of it just came back to me because I had been fluent when I was a lot younger, but at that brain, at that age, your brain is so valuable, it's amazing how fast you can learn that stuff. I forgot it all, again. And I had to do it again seven years later.
What about now?
Uh, I can get by.
All right, any other budget comments before we close the public hearing? All right, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so we're waiting for Representative Belcito, I don't, she's out there. You want to take a quick look?
Yeah.
So, she's here to give us a legislative update, if she's not here, we'll just move on, she can jump in after.
So, Greg, did you get any language that we have to say move to take the superintendent's under advisement, or are we just going to move, this is, we're just taking this forward as our?
I don't have any language, Laura, is there anything special we need to do for that, or just vote the number?
I was going to open and close the hearing.
Vote the number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we move the number?
Just later, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, later.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll do it later. So, we're just moving the number, and then that's it, kind of approving it. Okay. All right, next up, we will have a discussion on the request for sponsorship banners at the high school field, so Heather, you're up.
Brian, we're supposed to talk. Sorry. I'm actually never going for you, I kind of lost one more hold and crack, I'm cracking up. I'm here representing the friends of the Switch High School baseball, where the booster club or the baseball team, a lot of booster clubs for every sport, so we represent baseball at the moment, behind some of their boards as well, but we're wondering if you guys would approve sponsorship banners on the outfield fence at the mile lane baseball field. Right now, in the past, we've currently done, they're called the old cards, and we, they raise a lot of money for the team based on old cards, but the problem with the old cards is the company that makes them takes 40% of.
Fifty.
Fifty, 50%.
Fifty percent.
And, yep, this is why, who's here? Of our earnings, so it doesn't go to the baseball team at all, it pays for this company. And a lot of our local establishments support us, and, you know, we don't want to be losing their support, 40, 50% of it, to this company, when we can do it ourselves, or we can get these banners, and the cost that we come out of the sponsorship, we just need the banner at the one time, but I, I'm on the A and B board, and clearly, it's the same companies, businesses that support us, and I only have the bottom banner once, I put it up, I take it down, so the next time they sponsor us, all of their money, I go bring it to that sport. Baseball has a lot of, uh, things, well, maintenance that goes with it, I speak to that, that, that's a lot of budget can be, so we do a lot of support for just basic maintenance, what else?
We have the assistant coaches, and, I wanted to list the things that we would like to go in and update, or like an indoor guidance cage, just pitching mound covers, things like that, we'd like to update.
I did speak to Jonathan Mitchell, I asked him if it was allowed, he said, because I've seen it at other schools, I couldn't tell you right now which school's there, and he said, oh, yeah, that'd be great, and then I asked Tom Gallagher, and I, oh, he's the first, Mr. Mitchell told me that, he thought that maybe there were some MIA rules about how many you could have on the fence, and all those things, so I called them, and they said that they do not have any rules that is school-specific, so I emailed Tom Gallagher, and I asked him, and he said, nope, we have no rules, but we should come before you and ask if we could get the support to do the banners, we would, we'd take them down, they would not be up during any other course season.
You can say that.
Yeah.
And we actually do have a policy, it's in our folder tonight, policy KHV Laura put in.
Thank you, Laura.
That, that does reference, mentions, "The school committee may grant permission for advertising of commercial products or services in school buildings or on school property under guidelines or regulations, it may approve." So, it's essentially telling us we can do it if we approve it. You know, speaking from experience, trying to raise money for boosters programs, and selling those cards and $40 tins of popcorn that the vendor takes half of, it's a much bigger bang for your buck to be able to go to local businesses, and they really appreciate the support, and, you know, having their banner out there, I think it's a no-brainer for them every year to keep contributing, so.
We'd like to honor that.
So, I mean, obviously, the Institution for Savings has a huge banner printed on the field of the school, so it's, it's happened before. The issue is, is, okay, so, let's universalize it and say, put banners up in the gym, put banners up at the football stadium, there's no end to where you could go with this. Just wondering why we haven't done it in the past, is this something that is a direction we want to go, is this the best direction for a school district? You've talked to Tom, you've talked to Jonathan, they're probably the key two people to get permission from, but, you know, I mean, it would be easy to think of this as a universal thing that could be coordinated to all facilities, and then you got to feel bad for the programs that don't have their home field.
Right.
Right, or don't have a stadium that they can dress up cross-country, or traffic is good, but it's not easy. So, you know, it's, it's an interesting question, one that probably, in the past, we have asked for pretty high numbers for, for naming rights, but we've never done sponsorship. The only other example is we had a Cokes for Kickbacks program, where we got, we put Coke soda machines down in the, in the gym, in the cafeteria, and in exchange for that, and they, they would put up our scoreboard.
Oh, okay.
And so, we had that for years, and then we decided Coke wasn't healthy for our kids, and so, we cut that contract, and they said, no more, no more sponsorship of the scoreboards, we had a fine, anything like that. But that, that was another example of how you do it. So, I guess the big question is, do you want to universalize? Baseball's a worthy cause, obviously, my brother was the coach of that team for 15 years, so he did, he did all the gold cards and all that. I think it's an easy way to, obviously, the Little League's been doing it this way for years, but do you do it for make football, do you do it for basketball, do girls and boys' basketball get the sponsorship money for the gym, or is it the volleyball team that gets the sponsorship money for the gym, and how do you look at that?
Well, I see it as being up to the individual boosters programs to raise the money. If they raise the money, they get the banner, maybe in the case of the gym, if it is universalized, the volleyball and basketball team boosters work together and split the funds. You know, I know in the current situation with football, for example, with the football boosters and cheerleading boosters, they're raising money sort of independently, and they're, you know, kind of throwing it all in one pot, and they're figuring out where, who needs money where, and, you know, that, that's been pretty successful over the years. So, I, my feeling is it should be universalized, because again, I think it's a, a great opportunity for our programs to make money, especially now when they need the uniforms, they need the equipment, they need the, you know, they're paying for assistant coaches, and, you know, and again, I mean, every, we're so inundated with those Tiger cards, every program selling them, and to know that they're getting 50 cents on the dollar for what they sell is just, it's, you know, it's, it's a tough sell in my mind.
But, but this is the easiest sell, they're the only ones who use this field, other than the Babe Ruth and the others, right? What I'm saying is, the, the other gyms are multi-use, they're multi-sport, simultaneous multi-sport, so you wouldn't have that economic opportunity that baseball has, and, you know, you got, we have to figure that out, maybe on a policy level, theirs is easy.
Yeah.
If, are we, are we selling our real savers, each booster program selling a real saver, they don't know, I guess that's a big question. So, I, I would move to support this, and I'm happy to.
Second.
But I do think we want to consider the implications, both beneficial, you could apply it elsewhere, and, and they.
I have a quick question, the Institution for Savings, in the proposed video, do you remember what their donation was?
Yep. It was $600,000.
$600,000. And what, what does a banner, what is a banner?
Well, banner, a big banner that would be in the outfield that somebody could see in front of class is about $150.
What, what does he get a charge for?
A one-time.
A one-time, uh, we haven't actually had a, we wanted to get this far.
So, I think Little League, Little League does 500, I think.
I think it's going to be roughly about that.
Yeah, because I do, I do want the Little League field every year, and I'll do one for you.
No more, yeah.
And I'll do one at the football stadium, and in the gym too, but, you know, and that's And I'll do one at the football stadium and in the gym, too. But, you know, and that's, again, that pays over time, and I'm sure, again, a little less of small businesses would do that.
Chubb.
So, so my point is, is that, is that, you're talking about making it universal. I'm using the term field as an example. I don't know if we want to, I know it's a good cause. I advertised that banner when we had a substantial donation for, for capital donation for that field. I'm only speaking of the football field. And if we put banners around the fence and behind the stadium.
I don't know.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, you know, it seems like.
Can I ask, can I open them?
I haven't finished.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. But, but for, for a supporter that gives six hundred thousand dollars for their name, and then there's a banner that's tied a hundred and fifty dollars on the fence, you know, it's an act.
But that's, in my mind, I distinguish it this way. The six hundred thousand was to build the field and the facility, and it's there in perpetuity. These hundred and fifty dollar banners are to support the boosters program to help them provide stuff the kids need.
I get it. I get it. It's something we need to think about and discuss.
Yeah. So we have a.
But we don't have that problem. That's a baseball stadium.
So we have a motion. So moved in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
I think the only, the only other thing is this might be something that policy might think about.
People think about.
Because it's an opportunity for our budget, or for our booster budgets, right? But they are selling school property. For example, we considered putting advertisements on buses, advertisements in the performing arts center. They're all legitimate forms of advertising. It's just whether or not we want to start that process.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So legislative update, Representative Velcino is here. There she is.
They called the pieces of cheese and fried crabs and they figured out to get ahead. I like the guy with the, okay, nice, very basketball game. Hi, thank you for having me. Really appreciate it. I think that they'll be, thank you for your email, because it was actually your email that, I love it, it was practice going on.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty clear. Come in the door by the pack and take a ride.
I gave him a bag.
Oh, you gave him a bag.
Yes, and then, anyway.
Oh, you made it.
But you are playing instruments when I went in the voice. Guys, first off, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm not going to give you any, to get up and dance, I don't think. I mean, this is the mom, like, why am I?
It's for the people.
Okay, it's for the fellow people at home. But I do want to say that I hope that this is a relationship pretty meaningful with you here tonight. And to just say, I, as a parent, as a legislator, as a member of the community, and family members of mine who go to the school system, I just want to say thank you so much for the work and attention and dedication during the past two years. This is volunteer position. Can you run for it?
Two hundred dollars a year. Thank you very much.
I didn't realize that. I'm a little anxious about that, because, hey, you do, you know, but this really is all to students, in the school. And, and I've watched for a while, and now I'm here tonight to say, but I just want to say thank you very much for your continued perseverance and focus on getting kids out of there. I am sure that you, Chapter, oh, yeah, Chapter Seventy funding that you see every year, and you've seen the charity sheets that's come out that's available online. And this year's funding is four million, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. Let me ask, do you have, I apologize profusely about, what is the proposed budget for the year that I have all that?
Almost thirty-five million.
Thirty-four million, nine thirty.
Thirty-four, nine?
Thirty.
So you're a very, very, very small on car budget sadly. It would be bigger.
It's, what you're saying is, is about on point, right? So we're seeing that this is maybe ten, seven, ten percent, what have you. So although it sounds like it's a big number, it really is exactly that, right? It's a small piece of the pie, in which these are all proposed, just formulaic numbers. And there are some breakdowns. Because I know this group wants the detail, I will share the details. So there is non-resident people transports at two hundred and fifty thousand.
We don't get that, do you?
This is proposed at by twenty-three. I'm going to, you know, I'm sorry, I'm taking this out of here. This is what I'm going to do. In regards to legislative, in regards to legislative updates, there are, there are several different line items that are in this budget. And again, these are all like, you know, the government's without the budget, and we talk about it, and I'm here to understand what you need. So although I'm speaking as this one, and you do, let me know, please. And we'll do the same thing after, so we have to pay you. Elementary, secondary school emergency relief COVID funds for the purposes of a federally funded grant entitled elementary, secondary school emergency relief COVID fund. And that's one billion, two hundred and thirty-five million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, fifty-one dollars. And that's for the Commonwealth, right? Let in school child drinking water. Now, standing up here, asking questions, is this an issue for the school? Is that an issue yet?
No.
No.
Okay, great. Great. This continues to be an issue. And IP water infrastructure that we're located to update, upgrade through federal funds from the state. So for what it's worth, it's very small, yes, small figure, around three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Let testing in school, child can't drink water, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. School-based health programs for school health services and school-based health centers in school. The proposal for this figure in the budget is fifteen million, sixty-six thousand.
We don't have that either.
Refugee school impact for the purposes of a federally funded grant entitled refugee school, Act six hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty. At in refugee school impact for the purposes of a federally funded grant, three hundred and thirty-one thousand. And I'm going to be very frank with you. You guys do the HED break. You guys know the formulas and this and that. And just a broad base, I'm taking a look at it. It looks like some transportation went down from regional. I don't know how.
We don't get transportation funds because we're not regional.
That's exactly right. So I'm taking a look at it from that, that angle, and this is the same year the school district saw the different impacts. But I can read off the sheets, but you can also read off the sheet. But I want to say, I'm here tonight, but haven't come there. I don't know if Senator Power comes here or what that looks like, but I want to be part of this conversation and help move whatever those issues are for, to be a partner for this year.
So I think we've seen a couple of unique issues this year. One issue would be we've had a large number of new English language learners in our district, about fifty new ones in one particular school. And that's put a significant stress on our budget and our ability to deliver, deliver services. We've also been blessed to have a lot of one-time money, which we can't count on beyond this next year. And so we have a lot of positions and structure funded by one-time money that's going to go away in a year. And we have profound concerns. That means that you've given, the state Esther funds have given us a couple million dollars of one-time money that we're using to fund positions. That we expect to persist beyond the, beyond the next year or two. And if they are going to persist beyond the next year or two, we have to find mechanisms to support them within our own budget, which are not available.
Tell me, what, what's the count and what are you for?
Three, three teachers.
Okay.
Are Esther funded.
Yeah, three teachers. We did have an assistant principal who's Esther funded, which we just cut. Because of concerns about funding.
So, so it's always easy. It's not, it's not always easy. It's harder to take something out of the budget than it is, to put it, it seems, to get it out. All right, we're constantly, we're constantly answering questions from our other boards, our finance, the common select board, about, geez, your enrollment's going down with your STEs, meaning your staff utilization is going up. And, you know, I think education delivery is a lot different than it used to be. There's a lot of social emotional supports that didn't exist. And this pandemic has enhanced the need for those. So it's going to be tough to take those out. And we're not going to have, you know, we've had this last override last eight years, which has been great. But, frankly, it's been extended by a couple of years from cost savings at the beginning of the pandemic. But, so, we're going to need help two years from now, I think, with funding in the state. And, you know, your predecessor, Representative Brad Hill came in a couple of years ago, and the question was, where do you see new funding for schools?
Right, right, right.
And his answer was casinos in cannabis. So now that he's the chair of the casino commission, let's go get some milk for this.
So the biggest, the biggest issue we face is, most schools face, is this structural deficit, you know? So our budget this year is up roughly four and three quarters percent over the previous year. It averages increase of about four and a quarter percent per year. But our revenues that are allocated from the town only go up in the range of three point one percent, give or take, every year.
So you're a factor.
So, so this year, we, you know, we have about almost a one point nine million dollar draw from our stabilization fund. And Chubb mentioned the override that we passed five years ago, built that stabilization fund up. Now that stabilization fund is drawn, being drawn down, we have this year and potentially next year left with funds in it. Because of that structural deficit, the gap just keeps getting wider every year. So that's, that's the issue we contend with every year when we put this budget together.
And one of the traps we fall into is the state has given us one-time money for support, which we're using for our current budget and current funding. And that goes on top of the one point nine million we're already spending on our own stabilization funds. So when that one-time money is gone, we have to make massive cuts or ask for large overrides from our voters. And we're currently planning on asking for a two million dollar override from our voters this year, just to support the deficit that we will have in funding our educators that we have now.
For the next few years going forward.
And if we don't get that override, then, maybe not this year, but when the one-time money runs out, we'll have huge holes in our budget that we can't address unless we get overrides from our voters. And some wealthier towns have an easy time passing overrides. But historically, we fail overrides. And it hurts us because it affects our education to a degree, it affects our educators.
You're saying something that as, as a community member, you shouldn't have to be funded in our education or override, right? We see this all the time. And there needs to be equity and access to funds for our schools. And I really appreciate what you're saying, that I can't speak to the double Cs of campus and the casinos, but I do take the serious conversation we had between the state and the Fed on this as well. We are seeing some more monies coming into schools, public schools from the Fed, to put a little bit of my own lean on it, I think that we've seen a potential deep funding or. But it's much towards our public education over the past thirty or forty years. And here we are, where we're actually taxpayer, we show the burden of this. There's only so much to go around, right? So I'm really, I'm hearing what you're saying. I have a couple of questions to the two now. But is there specificity? You can give me this after, like, you can just say, sure, I'll leave it. That's fine. You know, I want to know more about what that might look like.
So this year, we can weather it because we have stabilization funds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A year, a year from now, we'll have, we'll have to make educator cuts across the board, which we've not yet planned.
How many are you looking at on that worst case scenario?
Two million dollars?
Yeah. How many, how many people we want to, how many bodies?
Oh, I mean, it's hard to put a number on it. It's a pretty significant amount.
Pretty significant?
If we had to make two million dollars in cash, sixty-seven percent of our budget is people.
No, it's eighty.
Eighty percent. Eighty percent of our budget is.
Eighty, what? More than eighty?
Sorry, I, I, I came up with sixty-seven.
Nope, it's way more.
I'm, I'm fine.
It's way more.
So eighty percent of two million bucks is people.
Were you including benefits and insurance? That's probably the difference.
I just want to straighten home.
I literally just wrote down the instability fund.
It'll become the instability fund.
The stabilization fund has been. The stabilization, the stabilization fund has been a great balancer, budget balancer.
So, so just as a, as a history from our, we would pass overrides one year, get them another year, lose them the next year, have ten teachers, add three teachers. It was, it was terrible. So seven or eight years ago, we decided to pass one big override for multiple years, and to script it out over years, so we'd be spending a consistent amount over time. And have the stabilization to withstand when the state cuts money. Like, in two thousand and three, when I started on the school committee, when the state cut twenty percent of Chapter Seventy funds in one year, and we were left in the works, right? Or when the, the town revenue was down, or more importantly, when we, you know, negotiate new settlements, we have to fund our educators' costs. So all those things are important, important to figure into, but we don't know year to year exactly what that's going to be. And so vote was another example of another crisis. The stabilization fund allowed us to consistently budget and not have to cut people one year and add them back the next. The problem is when you run a stabilization fund like that, you have to fund it from time to time. And that means a big override, which is very painful and stressful to get through. And that's what we're doing this year. So it's a, it's a challenge for every district on shore, but particularly for ours.
I appreciate that. Emily, hi. Hi. I hope it's part of the conversation also that cuts that people are talking about, when these funds go away, aren't the same as cuts we quote, because our, our teachers are experiencing learning in a way that they've never had to teach before. And the gaps that kids are experiencing, our gaps that they've never experienced before, our numbers they've never experienced before. And we talk, there's a lot of focus about moving the system ahead. But teachers don't have that luxury to just jump ahead to the new normal. They're dealing with the crisis that's going on now, and that's years to help support and years to help pull kids out of them. The kids are the ones who are going to be hurt if we're not funding at the levels we need to adequately support the kind of education, the kind of teaching that needs to take place. And so I really hope that that's, it's not just this COVID's behind us type of conversation, but it's really looking at, it's not sufficient just before. You have to be seeing what's going on in classrooms now, and it's, it's crisis. And that's not going away anytime soon. And teachers are scrambling to support our kids. And, and again, making up curriculum on the fly, having to adjust curriculum, to take care of gaps that are, you know, should have been taught two years ago, seeing children in their second grade classrooms who can't read, who's never written anything. This is something we've never seen before. And so I really can't stress enough in terms of if you're going around to school committees, please keep that in mind. But this is not a normal budget season, and it's not going to be for quite some time.
I really appreciate what you just said, Emily. I, I am a third grader who had their first grade year cut short. And I'm seeing that this is something in reference to what you just stated, in, we're still in this real, if they had the skills that they were able to bring in kindergarten, first, that, that foundation was shot. And the teachers did a great job. Everyone did a great job. It is just what it is. And so I, I also recommend to another school system, I think, look at the, we can't look at this as, oh, and two, you know, we're, two, this is, no, this is going to be years of us coming up. And so we can't just take these funds out and say we don't need them anymore. We're actually probably going to need, we all are enrolling with that. And if there are thoughts about what that is, please let me know. And I really appreciate what you just stated. Hi, Kate.
Hi. I was just going to say, we were talking about enrollment numbers, and I just want to make sure you know that our, our high enrollment numbers are really with our youngest learners. So our preschool numbers are really high, and our kindergarten numbers are really high. And these are kids that, you know, maybe didn't get preschool, or certainly didn't get sufficient preschool, didn't get, you know, early intervention services they might have otherwise gotten over the last two years. So, so the numbers are high and the needs are high. So that's, you know, that's just another big concern of ours in terms of adding new positions and making sure we keep class sizes small and supports high, so we can support these kids coming into the district in those really early critical years.
Question in regards to, and I'm just out of my own curiosity, and it does play into this, is how does that projection look, you know, in your elementary school right now into the middle school and high school? Have you seen those numbers get a little bit bigger?
It's really those, those early grades. It's really preschool.
It's one of our two elementary schools saw a fifty increase this year in. It's one of our two elementary schools saw a 50 increase this year, and we'll probably get 50 more kids next year, how it's projected.
Historically, historically, we have a big, a big small class that carries through through schools, and then people do, uh, play that to private schools, if they're at the high school, other stuff. But, you know, I've got two girls, my oldest had a big class that followed, followed her through, my youngest had 18 kids in the classroom, class, which was small.
Well, then, so, you know, I think that the, that's sort of the wild card for us too, in many towns, is the development, all the development that's happening now. How many new families are coming in? What sort of an impact will that have on the school system? Will that continue? You know, how do we plan for that?
So may I ask, is that discussed and, you know, put into a plan where you tell me each other?
Well, we've just, we've just, we've just.
I'm sweating to death, excuse me.
I know. Okay, we've got a system. We've just undergone, we're having a study made for us by NASDAQ, an enrollment study.
Okay.
It's a third-party study. We do take the state numbers, and as Dr. Phil Flynn has always said, I'll always remember him saying, the state numbers do fairly actively reflect our enrollment numbers, and they have over the past. We're concerned about the popularity of what's these states and the amount of enrollment. So we want to make sure, especially with the school building project coming up, that we have that, those elementary numbers nailed down. But before, before you go, I'd really like to thank the state for the support that they've given us in the last couple of years, and we have to, because I don't think that we would have been able to cope as well as we have without those. And it's nice that we've also had more than just the crisis covered. We have the crisis plus, plus the ramp, the ramp down in normalcy. We hope, we hope. So we, it's nice to have that reason. So we're very appreciative for the state's help with that.
I do want to say, I believe the conversation of being had with the state is not one, at least that I'm hearing, is not one of, oh, on, right, on February 28th, you know, we're, we're out of it. People understand from Western Mass to the Cape, to Apia, in some respects, they think they wish it were at the stadium, if you don't get ready to watch it, because I just said, you know, we practically forgot about this point, the stadium. We are, we, it's affordable access to quality education, but the discussion point of what Emily so quickly stated, and we've discussed here, is the need for continued support services out of this pandemic. And just pandemic, you know, pandemic, we need to be funding education. And I think there's, there's not one person I've heard that hasn't, hasn't said that this continues to be an issue. I'm a member of what's called progressive caucus, which can give a bunch of images in one's head, but it's really just a bunch of folks that have smaller communities and are looking for voices, and really, we've all said that education is our number one, that's like 60 members, our number one focus is education, which I was earlier, and then the Cape as well, and then the access for public university as well. We've got the money in this, we should be able to facilitate this. And again, and I'm thankful, and I'm really excited, and I haven't even put it to this , but thought, and he would not realize who I am, Dr. Phil Flynn.
Yeah, that's funny. Funny, funny of us.
And the fact that you've been doing this now for.
20 years, 19.
Yes.
Been here a long.
I paid my debt in society. He's actually been there since 2000.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I did, I did various schools, Cape as well. So I'm a local.
No, that's right.
That's well, it's great. Anyone else? I guess you should.
Just us?
Yeah.
We're full-out townies.
Full-out townies.
There'll be more.
And four lifeguards too.
And we're all, Green Beach lifeguarding too, that's full-time.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all our schools. It's a lot, it is, it's a lot to ask if you're coming back to the community. And I am going to ask, please email me, you know, if there's a consolidated message that you want to send to me, blah, 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 you know, I've written down my notes. Please don't think twice about reaching out, because I want to be able to step up to the plate as best as I can for these needs. And if someone's writing a check, we need to cash it, okay? The money's still here to support, and it shouldn't be just one-time funding. You know, these S R funds were exactly done, but we need to have a lot of conversation about keeping this sustainable and predictable as possible, to have that as truth. But you bring up a very good point, I think, all of our communities faces this. We can, you know, God, you know, we have like 25 new kids in kindergarten, and nobody knew that they were getting all of these kind of, who's showing up?
Who's moving out of the city?
Right, and that's it. That's it. And then the ESL component as well.
Which, which, you know, Ipswich, and I understand, when it comes time to figuring out the Ipswich share out of, out of state programs, our, our share is relatively low in the ratio, actually quite low. The billion and a half dollars that just was released before the pandemic, Ipswich's share was 40,000.
How much?
40,000.
40,000.
So, and I understand that the inner cities have a lot of needs. So that's something we always have to, we're always trying to get our, get our, get our share up, up, but we also understand.
Yeah, it's interesting to hear and how it's versus that, and of course, we thought about, we all understand.
Yep.
Our windows open here, the bathrooms, the toilets flush, you know, there's, there's different issues at the school.
Depends on the school, really.
Yeah, it really.
Some of our toilets flush.
So our two. So historically, you probably know, we have two 60, 70-year-old elementary schools, and we failed an override to rebuild those schools about five years ago, and we're preparing for an override for new elementary schools.
And then how's that, how's that conversation going?
It's working.
Well, that's, I know that.
We're actually setting up meetings with a facilitator to pull various factions of the town together to have a discussion about a site. So the key thing for us is to nail down a location that enough people can get on board with, so we could go to the town as a whole and try to move forward with a plan on that site. So COVID has sort of put a wrinkle in that plan. You know, it's difficult, obviously, to get people together in a room, but we're pushing that off. Ideally, in, in March, we'll have our, you know, our first round of those meetings and move forward from there.
You're going in a very tight, focused timeline, and that.
That's the plan. And, and again, that's why we felt it was worthwhile to hire a facilitator to help us through this process.
I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, and that's actually, Ted, you might actually like to come to one of those.
Yeah.
And we're just waiting to get our masks off to get in a room.
And when those are scheduled, I'll, I'll send a note to your office, and hopefully you could attend. That'd be great.
Please do. I think that it's, it's a conversation that we're going to see happen, and it is for maintenance issues, it's all of these, it's the need to, to cover, not the toilets flush or the toilets don't flush, but we don't want to get to that code.
We're there.
We're there.
Chubb wasn't lying, they're literally falling off the wall.
Yeah, the toilet fell off the wall.
We're there. The, the other thing that actually has been very valuable is when we've had Bruce Hart and, and Brad Hill come together, and it's really, it's really been good. It's been, it's been very positive. So I know you guys are different parties, but you're the same problem.
He and I work so closely.
Yeah, he's a good guy. He's a good guy.
He, he knows that the health and wellness of our communities is healthy families, healthy school systems, and really, you know, we're preparing for, for hopefully, who's going to, you know, the community that's going to see here being one whole. So it really is just what that life's like. And I think we understand that, that is, is our, our, so I know the senator would love to have all these wonderful people be here, not only the opportunity to, to be here again as well. I wanted to go back to the discussion points of what you stated in regards to the schools, and with such a profound thought that I can't follow, so, but I won't ask to, to, to be a part of, you know, whatever that is from a.
So invited to the elementary. Meeting for the facilitator.
Yes, yes. You know, if there's grants, there's going to be a lot of grants coming up, competitive grants. And anytime those things get, those, that sort of information gets my email, Tony Marino's getting this stuff all the time.
Great.
Okay.
Great.
I call him, I text him, I email him, and he, he's very excited to see that there's a lot of opportunity forward, so, however, that can help facilitate as well.
Good.
Okay.
All right.
I'm so, again, just great, great to see, see everyone in person, and however you want to, Emily, come back, I'm here for you. Do you have a deck of your budget, proposed budget? I'd love to get a copy of that.
I can send that over.
Yeah, go right here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure, Drew.
All right, moving right along. Discussion and vote on the FY '23 budget. Do we have any further discussion? Any other questions, comments, anything for Cheryl?
I just wanted a little clarification, and I wasn't part of what the, the four big debt categories that we have on the, the two, school construction, the turbine, and there was a fourth category. Do you have information about how much debt we're carrying, what the, the term remaining on those is, and when we would expect some of that to roll off?
Yeah, I can send that to you.
Okay.
With the debt schedules and the treasure.
Okay, so I think that would be useful, because I know that there are questions that kind of soar all the time about when we can get rid of those, so I think that would be useful.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that'd be good. Do you want to just send that around to everybody, just so we have it? Yeah, I'd be curious, too.
Yeah, you probably know the middle high school debt rolled off about a year ago.
Yeah.
So that was $2.7 million a year that fell out of your taxes, so you probably.
Yeah, that was the one I was familiar with.
So if there's no further discussion, could we get a motion to move the budget number?
Chubb, you have the number.
So can we just say?
Second.
34 million.
Oh, vector, I have it.
So we got a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Okay, it's ours now.
What's that?
Now we get to present it.
I know. Now we get to defend it, which we will do on February, I'm sorry, March 8th, 9th, and 10th. Finance update.
Thank you. So I include the typical year-to-date budget report. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. I thought I'd just give a few highlights on some of the things that we've seen over the past week, just to make you aware of them. Again, no concerns for the budget, just so you know kind of what, what's been going on. Chris Race, the facilities director, did email Brian and I to let us know of some overages that he had because of some emergency repairs in the buildings. The boiler at the middle school, high school had an emergency repair. We had some mold remediation and the lighting in the pack. So that was about $53,000 in repairs that were kind of unexpected. He can cover them within his budget, it's not an issue, but just wanted to kind of make you aware of that. As well as, he went up to bid for landscaping for this year, and it did come in higher, so his landscaping costs, which you saw in the '23 budget, has gone up as well, too. And then recently, we had some increases to our special ed transportation, but that's actually going to be covered by circuit breaker, so it doesn't impact the appropriated budget. And going forward with circuit breaker, we saw it for what will get dispersed next year is, and actually an allocation now for transportation. So there, we now are getting.
Will that be offset?
It will offset some of our transportation costs. It's the same, you know, it's a percent of eligible costs and whatnot, but now we have regular circuit breaker for tuitions, and we're going to have some circuit breaker to help with the transportation.
Wow.
And then, any questions?
Questions for Cheryl?
Why you highlighted it because it's, it's, for me, it's difficult to read the budget because just the submission is just, it's just awkward. And there's got to be a way to have a dashboard that, that gives us a, there's where we started. I know it's in there, but, but I'm not smart enough to.
Well, it's not smart. What you have to do is you have to look to the far right, see the available budget and the percent used.
Right.
And what happens is all the school buildings very rapidly encumber their funds because of their teacher salaries. So you'll see a school move to 85, 90% right off the bat because of the personnel costs.
Right.
But for example, if personnel, if services at central office building operations are over 100%, you know, that budget is being drawn down more than you'd expect, and it's moving into some other budget. And some schools historically would encumber all their funds and more right off the bat, just in case there was a budget freeze late in the year, so they wouldn't get their money froze.
Right.
That, that habit kind of went away when we had more comfortable budgeting, but in the old days, you know, the very first thing people would do on day one would be encumber everything in their budget that they could possibly encumber to protect it, because we had freezes most years in my early years here. We freeze the budget, we couldn't spend on anything after September, October. You don't have that problem anymore, but that was an issue three years. So we'd always watch that, those encumbrance numbers really closely, because people would redline them.
So I think Emily said, I think you just said it best, visualize, visualize the dashboard. You know, you just, Laura has a survey of the, of the people who are a favorite of the mask mandate, being what you're correct, your staff, staff survey. She held it up across the room, I saw the numbers, I'm like, oh, there you go. 65% like it. If, you know, I know there's, there's, there's two months left in the, in the fiscal year, and we still have a green witch, I'm okay. I don't mean it's not that, that simple, but just looking at this, I can't, I can't ever, I can never ask an effective question at this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate when you bring these to walk us through some, some stuff, too.
The highlights are great.
Yeah.
So highlights are what we always think, or what I always think.
No, I agree with you. It's, it's a lot of information, and it's good to hear, you know, a few things pulled out that we should know about.
And I mean, I think for, and that's why sometimes the monthly updates are a little difficult, because it's literally just, it's data. There's really nothing or start, I mean, happening sometimes month to month.
You're going to score them, they'll friend you more. We're good.
Get the thumbs up.
You know, that might be something to think about, though, in terms of communication as we're going into the override and a school and budget and all that is getting, if we've had a slide that we could even post publicly that really just was very broad strokes, but people.
Well, the school dashboard's a great idea. That, that idea, the school dashboard with the red, green, and, and yellow was, I know from 15 years ago. It kind of failed because it's hard to measure things every two weeks that show how they're performing.
Yeah, we could do a monthly.
I live close to my pet, but I know I worked as a monster, and that's what we did. We put a dashboard, and everybody looked at it.
The hospital has a dashboard, but obviously, monitoring, things in the hospital change, we keep it on the monitor.
The override committee has been talking about getting a couple of infographics for their campaign, you know, like the 3.1% budget increase, and then the 4.25% diverging line sort of as a visual, a little individual, so I think it'd be useful to just, those concepts of the budget that are, make it easy for people to grow. Demystify the whole thing.
All right, thanks, Cheryl. Appreciate it.
Actually, Evan, sorry, one quick question. Where was the mold? What was the mold issue? Where was that?
I think it was in the library.
In this building or?
It was the water room, was it?
Yeah, I don't, he didn't tell me what building it was, but I think it was in the library.
Now, we were supposed to get a geothermal review of our potential for geothermal out here, and that was supposed to be back, I think, right around now. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, and then the email, did that email go, was that only two names?
I didn't get one, I didn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought everybody got that. The feasibility study is complete, is ready to go almost for the town hall, because they're doing the same thing at the same time. Arts is gonna take a little longer because of the poor records, so they're continuing to look, so they need more time, Chris and I, you know, about a week ago, he needs more time for, for the engineers to gather records and base information.
Okay.
I think it's very important.
Okay, next item is override discussion. You want to give maybe an update on the steering committee and kind of their?
Sure, so, um, yeah, so steering committee has formed a few weeks ago, they're meeting weekly, pretty organized, they're, they're working right now mostly on, in the next couple of weeks, trying to get a website set up, and really focusing on their messaging, so I think they're gonna need some information and help from us in terms of, of messaging, and they'll probably also be looking to us for some data points, numbers, sort of, to sort of, you know, facts to back up the messaging, and that sort of thing, so I think that's something that we'll need to be continuing to talk about as, as they sort of firm up and get their messaging together. They're, they're not gonna, they'll probably go public in, you know, another two or three weeks, I think, they're sort of trying to get things lined up and before they sort of go live.
Go live.
Yeah, Ted's been on a couple of meetings.
Yeah, I was at one, I wasn't at this last one, I was at the one before, and I was really impressed with how far along they are in the group that's there, I thought they were, they're a great group, super motivated, really organized, and they kind of all have their marching orders, and it's, it's great to see.
Yeah, it's a really nice mix of experienced people who've, who've been through overrides before, and, and some really new, new parents who, some don't even have kids in the district yet, but they're disinterested and, and know, know that this is gonna impact their kids, so they're, they're motivated to help out.
He's on the steering committee.
It's a nice mix, yeah. Yeah, a couple of people have, have quite young kids, so it's a nice mix.
Yeah, it's a great group, they've been, this month is all about setting up infrastructure, databases, getting an account ready, filing, filing their 501(c), necessary forms, and they've got a great thing on their website, on their shared drive, phase one of their campaigns for March is educate, April is motivate, and May is activate, and they've got some really good, a really good action plan. I'm, I, I, I joined as, as an interested school committee member to field, to field the questions and provide answers. I'm out of the district, the fifth, the twenty-second of March, and there will be two meetings then, it'd be great to get some other committee, committee members there that they'd really like to have our support, as much as we need their support, and I know you weren't there this week, so, I know we don't want to probably get four people, four committee members in a meeting, but.
I'm happy to cover.
Yeah, it's, it's Wednesday, seven thirty, seven thirty, eight thirty, that's, and then nine.
Yeah, that's, that's like good discussions, there's a lot of, because there's so many new.
Great, great.
Parents, there's a lot of things to discuss and for them to learn about, you know.
And there's, there's some good institutional people there, too. Marcia Gray has some great, you know, experience.
Marcia Gray has a lot of experience.
Override, and she's got some good, good ideas from this one, and then some fresh, some fresh, some fresh blood with some young, young parents, it's really impressive.
So we have our finance committee meetings the eighth, ninth, and tenth, so the night of the tenth is scheduled for the override discussion, so I think budget subcommittee, we should convene that week before, I think, just to get everything organized.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that would be the week of the twenty-eighth. So I think that's obviously gonna be important, and, you know, I think ideally, what we would do is be prepared to present that on the night of the ninth, I, I talked to Michael Dougherty and asked him if we really needed to stretch it to a third night, and he was, said he'd like to have the third night on the calendar, but I'm hopeful that we could have, you know, get through the two elementary schools on the Tuesday night, high school, middle school, central office on that Wednesday, and then have enough time to get the override in that Wednesday night, so when at the end of the third night, we'll see how that goes.
Another thing that override group is doing is getting to all the school councils, so I've been to three of the four school councils, and Dianne is just scheduled last, so they're going there next week. But that's been a nice opportunity to, to keep the administrators, too, they haven't lived through an override, or cuts, three of the four administrators, so.
Isn't that amazing?
And Dr. Blake, too, with their.
We have, yeah, all these people are new.
Hasn't been through either, so, so just get them to hear, you know, the history of the cuts and, and what the override's for.
Yeah, my daughters have a high school school council, and she was excited to hear about it.
That was really helpful, I hadn't understood what it was previously, so that was really helpful.
Yeah, yeah, and we tried to sort of plug the high school students, to help out, because that's a great demographic of eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on, superintendent administrator's report, obviously Brian's not here, but one thing I'll add is just update everyone on the COVID numbers that Laura sent over earlier. So from two-three to two-ten, looks like a total of nineteen cases, down from twenty-eight the week prior, positivity rate NIPS, which is seven percent this week, which is down from ten point nine percent the previous week, so the numbers are moving in the right direction.
Yeah, the hospitals are doing better, too, we're down to twenty-five, we were seventy-five three or four weeks ago, and if you look at the, you know, the sewer data, it's plummeted almost back down to nothing, like, really, the last week or so, it's just gone right down, so, you know, maybe this is the end, wouldn't it be nice?
Well, that was my next question, is there anything else on the horizon, another variant, or?
There's an Omicron variant, but it doesn't seem to be.
It doesn't seem to be.
Much at this point.
I mean, there are parts of the world where Omicron's ripping right now, but we're passing, I think.
Go and another.
So I know we're gonna have a mass discussion next week.
Yeah.
What data do we need to make that decision? I brought forward to you that I think we need vaccination numbers for each building. I think we need to know, at least, it'd be nice to have survey information from, you know, both residents and, and educators and.
Yeah, so the surveys are actually coming in, so we have, as of six tonight, Laura says, we have about two-hundred-and-ninety-seven respondents to the survey, so we'll get some more between now and Tuesday, and have accurate data for Tuesday. So, so far, you know, the, the numbers are coming in in favor of dropping the mandate on the twenty-eighth.
I wouldn't be surprised with that. If you talk to the kids, they all want to get out of masks.
Yeah.
But I think it's always optional for kids to wear masks, and for teachers to wear masks, too.
Right.
Maybe, we need to, obviously, the negotiation piece to this, I don't know where we stand on that, and, and, you know, need to know the sense of the administration as well.
Yeah, and, yeah, so we will, we'll need to, we'll need to speak with the IEA about kind of the process and, and how that will all work, so that's, you know, that'll, that'll move forward on Tuesday, and, or between now and Tuesday, we'll pull the data together we need and have that ready for Tuesday night.
Since we're gonna be hearing, you know, it's a hearing that we're having, I'd be interested in hearing what the school nurses' opinion are, either Jen or, or someone else, just to come and kind of say, like, having been through what they've been through the last two years, what is their feeling about it?
Okay.
And like, whether there might be an idea, you know, with kids under five not yet being eligible for vaccine, whether we might do partial, and so protecting the younger kids, or what their thoughts are.
That's a good point, I can ask Jen for her input there. Okay. Subcommittees, working groups, liaison reports, so athletics, we met the other night, topic of discussion was mid-level waivers, so opening up sports to eighth graders potentially, if the high school level teams are not able to field a team at the JV or freshman level, potentially. So, there was a lot of talk about that. Ideally, moving forward with just sort of opening it up to teams that we have a pretty high, we know there's a high probability of them not being able to field the numbers, and then if we need it, we have it, if we don't need it, we don't have to use it. I guess the catch is that you have to apply for these things sixty days in advance of the start of the season, so, you know, kind of have to plan for this stuff a little bit early, but I think it's, it's good that, you know, Tom Gallagher is sort of on top of this now, and we're, you know, we're moving forward with that, I think it'll be good for our programs. Emily?
I understand that Tom's the high school athletic director, but is there ever any momentum out of him on focusing on building these sports programs and their sort of relationship to the high school sports, because it seems like that's a place for potential, I don't say advocacy, but I would think he'd be interested in sort of being a part of building that conversation and.
Yeah, it's always been up to the high school coaches to develop that relationship with the youth level.
But wouldn't he, like, support it, or?
I, I think more could be done, I think, and that's one of the things we talked about at that meeting the other night, is, is having a better integration between the high school and the youth, just in terms of the high school letting the youth programs know, or the middle school kids know what sports are available at high school, when they start, how to get involved, who to contact, that sort of thing, so we've, we've talked about doing a, you know, a fall sports fair in the fall, just so kids in eighth grade can know, and show up and meet the captains and players, and sign up to get on the distribution list, so they know when practices start, that kind of thing.
And like, some flexibility of letting kids on, I mean, I understand that any person has a start date, but, I mean, I would think, especially with incoming freshmen, you could, there could be a little bit more.
Really?
I have one thing, um, I think one thing that was helpful this year, which I don't know if the high school's done previously, but the National Honor Society put together this freshman orientation type thing, and so they had, they gave like the ninth graders a tour, this was over the summer, and then they had like activity care tables, and so they had like the swim tables, so that was really helpful, I feel like, in getting freshman members, I know, especially for the swim team, they had a lot of success with getting freshmen onto the team, and so they had more voice this year, which had been a problem in the past, so I think that was a big help, and so I think continuing that would be helpful.
So historically, the most successful teams had coaches who had camps and outreach programs throughout the year, and who communicated with youth sports leaders in their sports. For example, basketball coaches would coordinate with all the youth sports, uh, teachers, coaches, at all the levels of, of travel basketball and youth basketball, they'd go down to the middle school basketball program and have little camps and tutorials at the beginning of the basketball season for the intramural season, I know that lacrosse did it for years, where they came down and did coaches in camp, coaching in camps, football for years would drop down to lower levels, and the coach of the high school would have influence and discussion about setting the offense, the defense, the, the programs that they'd run at other lower levels. That's kind of not held together over turnover over the last few years, and it would be nice to reinstate that, but most of that was motivated by the individual coaches trying to build a brand and trying to build a program, and again, the successful coaches had a fleet of talented kids coming in every year who were rebuilding their programs, and so that, that differentiated the successful players who's less successful. There's also a long-term problem with junior, middle school sports, because they're underpowered, they're not necessarily competitive, and they don't have a lot of opportunity to compete against equal or similar teams, or similar programs, that interstalastic piece isn't really any good, so mostly it's been intramural stuff, and then paid travel programs outside of school have been the majority of the skill delivery, so, I, I do think it's super important in a variety of sports, in fact, most sports, to develop skills before you reach the high school, if you're not playing basketball for a few years, lacrosse for a few years before you hit the high school, you're not gonna be prepared to play, you're just not, and you'll never probably be able to participate at a varsity level if you don't have the ability to dribble a basketball in high school, so all those things are, are things that need to be developed, and I think the coaches, as part of the purview of this athletic director, should be working with youth coaches as well as with the program, and I will say, the coaches are not allowed to work outside the regular season, so they can run camps, but they're not supposed to be, you know, coaching youths in the offseason.
Right.
Yeah, why, why is, why is it not strung at the middle school, is it interest, is that money, is it?
Coordination, I think.
Coordination, okay.
The middle school's done its own little programs for a long time.
Yeah.
And youth sports have done.
I mean, I agree with you, there's a lot of fun.
Fun, intramural is the middle school's program, and youth sports are more serious and more, more time in outside of the school framework.
Right.
So that's athletics budget, we have not met, but we'll have to schedule a meeting for that first week in March. Any other working groups? Met since last, did we meet last, last week?
We just met.
A year ago.
Yeah, if you didn't get it from the athletics, the big focus between middle school waivers and getting the middle school involved, and all this other stuff, is all about participation, especially younger level participation, which we lost a lot of freshmen particularly, but a lot of athletes have chosen not to participate in all three sports that they might have been asked. So one of the thoughts years ago was to waive participation costs as a freshman, or to make them graded, so, you know, you pay less freshman year and a little bit more as you go, or in many districts, they've waived athletic fees altogether, that's responsible for a big chunk of our athletic budget, so it's gonna be hard to get rid of, and it's always been there, so it would be something we'd have to do by fiat, it would be hard to do, there was a thought of doing a FEFES grant to do the freshman waiver one year and see how that works, those are all ways that we could conceivably increase participation.
Yeah. Okay, no other working groups? Subcommittees have met, any new business?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, and I should have worked this in, probably around budget, but I was just curious, maybe we can ask Brian when he comes back, so, I've been thinking a lot about this vice principal position, and I still think this year just isn't the year, I'm curious if Ryan has gone to the two elementary schools principals and said, is there any part of what you're doing now that central office can pick up, in light of the fact that we're not, we're not supporting that position for next year, and I just sort of, I feel like there's gotta be either budgetary things that central office can pick up, or something that can help them out, because I, I do know that is something that should be addressed eventually, but I was just sort of trying to think about.
Yeah, I was thinking something similar, I mean, I, I didn't realize that there were two administrative positions supporting each principal in various ways, you know, front office, sort of other positions, but I was thinking the same thing, is there any things that can be offloaded onto a teacher when it's taken, or, you know.
But not even to the teachers, like, can the central office pick up some of this stuff?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's why I asked the question about the curriculum director, giving some evaluation.
Thank you, thank you, that's, that would be my.
Like, that kind of thing, right?
And, you know, and from what Brian said, and Brian should be here to answer these questions, of course, but what Brian said, this year Tracy has worked with both elementary principals more closely than she normally would, because they're, they're in meetings, so just gonna keep that engagement on, and we should ask how that engagement looks, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it might be worth reassessing what that job description looks like, too, if that's.
How much of the budget, they're, you know, which piece, like, are there some pieces that they really don't need to be spending their time on, so that's free up?
Yeah, I also, you know, there was, there was a sense that there were overwhelming challenges in the elementary school this year that any administrator would have struggled with.
Right.
And so the idea of the assistant principal may have been an effort to offload some of those stresses, to make it a more manageable job, because you don't want to lose an administrator who you think is promising to a new stressor, maybe, you know, you walk into a job that's ridiculous and overwhelming, the first thing you do is like, this isn't worth my time, I'm out of here.
Right.
And drop it, and that would, that would put us in a worse situation than we are right now, so this might be about administrative preservation, people drop jobs easy nowadays, so if we're gonna make a ridiculous, undoable job, maybe, maybe we should think twice.
Well, I mean, the consensus of this committee, from what I heard last Thursday, and I apologize I wasn't here, was, you know, it's not that we don't, we recognize the need, and so we need, you know, if we're not gonna support the position, we need to think about what else we can do.
The time is not right for this, I mean, it's just not.
Right, but is there something else we can do?
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess that's, you know, at least my message is I don't want the administrators to feel like we're not hearing where they're coming from, and I think working toward a solution to help them with the challenges they're facing this year is a worthwhile discussion to have with Brian and figure out a way to do that.
All right, come on.
Okay. Vouchers and bills, we're good with that, right?
Do you need to vote for the, for the president?
Yes. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura. We'll rewind to. Thank you, Laura. We'll rewind to discuss this. All right, so we have on the table for vote, the contracts which have been, contracts that have been ratified by the clerical and food service groups. So if we can get a motion to approve those contracts?
Vote to support.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Obstein.
Want abstention? Thanks, Laura. Consent agenda, there is no consent agenda tonight. So if I can get a motion to adjourn, unless anyone else wants to-
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, can I ask a practical question outside the budget thing, outside our meeting? Do we need eighty percent vaccination rates to get the new, or the mask waiver? We could just say, we go, we're done.
Just say, accept, yeah, we're done, and move forward.
We didn't have an independent policy either. I mean, we have the mask policy, but we didn't do our own branding this year. We just voted to-
Do we have a memory of what we understood? Did that include the masks, or did it not?
Say it again?
MOU, does that include the masks?
No.
It did, but I can't think of what we need to-
That's a good point.
Or we peel the masks.
Didn't the MOU expire with the new contract?
Might have.
No, but we, we had to redo a couple of things. It's very, very heated.
Did you guys manage to get the contract signed?
Uh, we have to meet one more time, just finally. I think we're-
Details?
Shutting eyes and crossing Ts.
It's Larry Lissard who's doing it?
What's that?
Larry Lissard's doing your ground source heat pump here?
Yes.
Yeah, he's, he's doing lots of-
What is it? Check it out. You guys got the subject, buddy.